Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for July 16, 2024. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please again call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Littord?
Here.
Solansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. Once again, if anyone would like to address the committee meeting, kindly step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. At this point, does anyone like to address the Committee of the Whole meeting? Anyone online?
No, Mayor, there is not.
Thank you. Moving on to standing committee reports. First standing committee report is Building and Zoning Committee Chairman Gunstein.
President Wallace, we have one item tonight, and it's the unincorporated and infill site review. The Committee of the Whole's feedback will serve as a starting point for the strategic plan, short-term, complex goals, initiate update of future land use plan for the village. Based on tonight's discussion on the development opportunities, in the village, staff will determine sub-areas for further study. And with that, I'm just going to turn it right over to Kristy Stone and watch her presentation.
I wonder why my presentation isn't showing up on the screen.
Trying to make the meeting shorter.
Right?
You're usually the good one with technology.
Oh, absolutely.
Ray, can you go over there and help?
Yeah.
I could call my granddaughter. She showed me how to email pictures.
Did you have the little bulb on top of your camera that you were using?
With the flash?
Had Kodak film.
Testing his tubes at Walgreens? Or the tube tester?
Um...
For TVs?
Flash. Okay.
It's okay. We don't get paid by the hour anyways.
All right. First, I'm going to start just very briefly going over what development sites we have left in the business park. We currently have 2305 to 2225 Kenyon is under construction. The groundbreaking for that is later this month. For those of you that would like to attend one, I believe it's on the 31st at noon. Great Lake Two finished their construction last month. Allen Horticulture is under construction. If you drive down West Bartlett Road, you'll see the building right there at Miles. Southwind Retail, we have an application in. The petitioner is revising the plans. We have been waiting since February to get a resubmit for that, but it is for a multi-tenant retail space. They say they have a letter of intent from a small grocer, so it's something that the residents on the west side will be very excited about once construction gets started. And Southwind Self-Storage, the construction complete is on that as well. We are down to three development sites within this area. I'm meeting with the broker for the 14-acre Kenyon property that's located at the northeast corner of Route 25 and West Bartlett Road next week. The village's comprehensive plan calls for commercial along West Bartlett Road. Their annexation ordinance, however, allows them to have industrial uses there as well. So, we're trying to see if we can still get them to do the retail. The site to the east, number two, the developer has expressed interest in modifying the zoning to allow light industrial uses there. Again, we would like them to try to partner to get more retail on that corner, but it's going to be something the developer may be coming forward shortly, as they did with Allen Horticulture, to change the planned development zoning. There is one site left in Southwind Business Park. The developer has said there's been some interest from a daycare facility at this site, so that's just north of Parkland Prep Academy. In Brewster Creek, we have about eight sites that are under construction or have just completed construction, and we are down to five available sites. I have had interest from, Rana is looking at sites one and three, which one is located just south of the fire station. They're also possibly considering purchasing the property at Munger and Brewster Creek Boulevard, where the site of the former gravel plant. But we have, and then Herman Ultrasonics has already purchased Site Five. At some point, they plan on putting in, in addition to their building. Now to the infill development opportunities. Westridge Commercial Outlot. So, these are a lot of the sites you'll see that were random pieces that are kind of existing. Everything developed around them. We have had plans approved before for a three-building commercial development. It was never constructed, so any project would have to go through the process again. Castle Creek Outlot. So, on Lambert Lane, back in 2020, in 2001, the plan was for the railroads that go north to south. Metro was looking at creating the Star Line. This would have been the intersection of two passenger rail lines. They were looking at installing a transfer station for those two rail lines. The village had the developer donate the property, and the intent was for us to sell it to Metro. The CN purchased that railroad, so now that property we've been holding on to since that time. Currently, the plan's called for municipal institutional uses. That might not be the highest and best use for that property at this point.
Is that property currently listed for sale anywhere?
It is not. The Liberty Elementary School Outlot at the southeast corner of West Bartlett and Naperville Road. Originally, U46 did try to purchase this property when they bought the land for Liberty. The property owner was insistent on keeping the corner for, their intent was commercial uses. They did not approach the village about getting commercial zoning for it, however. There are some concerns with access and with the potential traffic interacting with the school during peak hours. The property owner is still advertising it for commercial. There is, there are some land use restrictions that were recorded as part of an agreement with U46, but the village was not a party to any of those agreements. The Crown Outlot at the northwest corner of Route 59 and West Bartlett Road. So far, this only contact staff has had is with people that are looking at doing truck stop establishments. That is not a permitted use. It's technically prohibited under the current zoning. So, that is, we've directed anyone with that interest that they would have to come before the board and submit a concept plan to get your feedback to see if that's a policy decision that we look at pursuing.
Kristy, question for you. Give us our definition of a truck stop establishment.
So, a truck stop establishment has to sell a certain amount of diesel fuel, as well as have separate designated diesel pumps. If you have the diesel pumps and you meet the threshold of gas sales, you're able to have video gaming. So, the purpose of the truck stop establishment is typically to have the video gaming. The only other way they could have it is if they were a gas station that had a poor license, which meant they would be serving.
Can, can we look at that in the future? Because I know a lot of other villages have changed that to pump and go, because truck stops are considered like with a shower and a restaurant and all that stuff.
Exactly.
So, I'm just trying to, because when you see a gas station and we put the word truck stop, it increases the amount of concern versus just a simple gas station that has a lane for a truck where the driver doesn't get out and go inside, take a shower or a nap, or sit and read the paper. It is a pump and go.
So, the reason why we define it as a truck stop establishment was to match the state terminology, so that there wasn't any sort of confusion.
Yeah, but I agree with you, with Trustee Gunstein, because of the fact, the interpretation people have when they hear truck stop, you know, is that the shower facilities and actually some people have even asked whether or not the truck can stay there overnight, right?
Because I was on the Plan Commission when we did the True North out at West Bartlett Road, 25, and the amount of people that came complaining about truck drivers and overnight sleeping and everything like that, we had to explain that that wasn't what this is. And it's not. I go in there all the time, and it is very clean. The truck drivers come in, they fill and they go, and I think it's a great establishment, and I'm sure all those people that came in have used it, and they've realized that it's not necessarily a truck stop like you would see on the side of a highway.
Right. But the, our current definitions, truck stops, or whatever you would classify it as, are only permitted as a special use in the B4 zoning district. Over in B4 zoning, typically, the amount of contiguous land area is a minimum of 10 acres. So, that business park is allowed to have B4 uses as well as I1 uses. This site, as part of their development plan, was they were limited to B3 uses, or slightly less intensive. So, it's something that would have to amend to allow the use, however, whatever term we want to use, to allow it in this location.
Yeah, I'm not indicating any particular area. I'm just looking at it as a general statement to the village. We may have this come up again in other areas in town.
Right.
You said that there was an instance where we could get gaming for gas stations. I didn't hear what you said, that they had to have to get done.
So, for, if a gas station wants to have video gaming without having the truck stop designation, having the separate diesel, they have to have a poor license, so they have to be able to serve alcohol.
In some places, down south in the southern suburbs, there are liquor stores that have video gaming.
I just wanted to mention that we're meeting with the Crown folks next week.
Yeah.
Okay.
And no matter what you call the, whatever facility we would put there, you got to make sure that we're cognizant of how close it is to the nearest housing.
Correct.
So, that makes it tricky.
Real quick, before you go into another property, I know you were at West Bartlett Road and Naperville Road. You left off the northwest corner. Is there something scheduled for the northwest corner, or is that?
Unincorporated.
Is it unincorporated?
Which one? Oh, that property to the north?
At Naperville and West Bartlett Road, I'm sorry.
That's unincorporated right now, I think.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's unincorporated. That's later.
Okay.
We've had some manufacturers approach us about that lot, but...
So, I also want to state there is a site for sale currently on the east side of Route 59 that's surrounded by now Park District property. So, the village hasn't had any contact in that since we were in the old village hall.
There's sewer and water to that site?
No.
No?
No, not currently. Route 59, south of Lake Street, there are four parcels for sale currently, about 45 acres. Two of those are for sale, the larger two. This is within our TIF district. There are listings right now.
A legit TIF district.
Yes. So, the property to the north, number one, was zoned B4 as part of the Eagles Ridge subdivision. The plan was to have commercial uses. If you notice, at the northwest corner of the property, there is a weird, the property kind of jags, juts out. That was so that there could be a future connection to Horizon Drive for this parcel. The property to the south is currently zoned ER1. That listing has been up for a while. The village has not had any interest recently in either of these properties. There is a significant grade change from Route 59 to the property line.
Is, is that the storage unit that's right next to number two there?
There, the property just south of number two is currently, there's an application in before Cook County's zoning board of appeals to build another U-Haul self-storage location there.
Why is that with Cook County?
It was, it was never annexed into the village.
So, there's...
There's two properties south of this, so the existing Storage Mart location, and there's a small property just north of that between the storage location that you can see on here. There's another lot just north of it that's unincorporated.
That's not part of Bartlett.
Not part of Bartlett.
Is there a house on that?
No, currently, they're vacant. There wa, there was a house on it. It was demolished several years ago.
This is where the potential addition to the storage unit could be?
It's not an addition. It's a completely different developer that would be building it. They have no association with the Storage Mart.
That's adjacent to the existing one that's there?
Correct.
Going to the north?
Correct.
Why haven't we got next to that property?
Typically, we wait for someone, historically, we've waited for someone to apply to the village so we can enter into an annexation agreement.
Well, somehow, there's a rumor out there, not, not a rumor, but somehow this story got out, and I've heard about this repeatedly from a number of people about the potential of a storage center being, being built there. Now, I don't know how this got out.
There is an application through Cook County to construct a storage on that, on that facility.
Kind of rumor.
Yeah.
You're right.
I attended the three-hour zoning board hearing on that, and we objected to it.
Yes.
So, we are waiting for the zoning board of appeals to make their recommendation. If, and at that point, we would bring it to the village board. We could pass a formal resolution before it gets to the county board for a final vote.
All right. Thank you. Answer my question.
The property at the southwest corner of Devon and Prospect, it's currently zoned B2. There have been several applications throughout the years for this site. We had a banquet hall and chapel that failed to pass in 2016. We received a development application in 2018 for a daycare and retail center, but it was withdrawn prior to any public hearings. We also had a family video that was interested in going in that, back in like 2006.
Is there any existing, is there any existing interest in that parcel at this time?
At this time, like I said, the last time we've had contact with anyone was in 2018 for, it was the Learning Center, I believe, was the developer that was interested in that.
And it could have been a banquet facility.
A banquet facility, right. That went through the process in 2016.
Yeah, I, I know about that. Do you know about that?
Yeah, I do.
995 East Devon Avenue is a little bit less than two acres. It is designated as mixed-use business park. The property was cleared last year, and the applicant built a fence along the south property line to provide a buffer. They had originally submitted a building permit, but the application has expired, and they have relisted it for sale. The property directly east of here has been acquired by IDOT years ago for the Elgin-O'Hare expansion.
It's going to fly right over that.
Just east of it. If you recall, earlier this year, we approved the promenade development at the northwest corner of Sterns and County Farm. The applicant has until January 16th to start construction, or the approvals will expire. Staff has not heard from the applicant since they got their approvals.
What do you think it costs them to go through that approval process? Just a ballpark?
I'd guess probably about $25,000 to $50,000.
And they're just going to let it go?
I, I don't know. I, they have, our building manager worked with them in another community, and things were drawn out, so they may be coming back for an extension for those PUD approvals to start construction.
Sounds familiar.
They realize what an undertaking the dirt work is there.
They should have known that at the beginning, but...
They should have, right.
All right. There is a lot at Route 59 in Norwood. It's a little bit less than three acres. Much less of that is actually buildable due to a large wetland on the site. It was created as part of Brewster Creek Center Unit 2. Most of the site, as I said, is a stormwater detention and utility easement for the existing businesses that are around there. Staff has not had any interest in the site in the time that I have been at the village.
Is that our property, or?
It is not. It's privately owned.
So, what do they do with that, then?
They pay the taxes, and they keep the sign posted for sale. Artist Senior Living Lot 2 is located behind the existing facility. The current zoning allows residential uses, offices, clinics, daycares, retail, senior housing. There was a plan approved back in 2014, another one approved in 2017. There were extensions of those PUD approvals, but they stopped proceeding with the extensions, and the approvals have expired. Staff has gotten some interest. If you recall, Alden was looking at a different site in the village. We tried to get them to go over here since they already had zoning by right. They said that didn't meet all the metrics that they needed. The property on the west side of Route 59, north of Schick, they, was approved for a two-lot subdivision in 2022 with a Dunkin' Donuts. The petitioner submitted a building permit application for the Dunkin' Donuts, but they didn't complete all the approvals, all the conditions of their approval. So, once they meet the conditions of the approval, we'd be able to issue the permits on that.
How long has that been?
Since the...
Because they submitted their permit.
They submitted their permit in March.
Okay.
The west...
What's the difference between that one expir, or not expiring, and the one by County Farm and Sterns?
Because it wasn't a planned unit development. So, the planned unit development has specific timelines in our zoning ordinance. Right now, we don't have time limits to start construction really on anything else.
Okay.
The west side of Route 59, south of Schick Road, back in 20, 2007, this was approved for a commercial development. It was a large retail center with a restaurant outlot. The project was never constructed. The Committee of the Whole reviewed a, reviewed a concept plan in 2018 for a senior housing community, which included a retail center as well. The applicant, for whatever reason, never moved forward with that. Then, a concept plan came in in 2021 for a senior apartment building. There was preference that there be some commercial uses. The applicants withdrew, withdrew their formal application. We were recently contacted by a potential buyer that was looking at a proposed outdoor soccer field and a domed soccer field that would have been about 60 feet tall. Staff recommended that they come for, through the Committee of the Whole to get your feedback on it before proceeding. They decided just to walk away. We did meet with the property owner to go over some of the uses that we would prefer. They have a lot of contacts in the retail field, so we're hoping that we'll get more interest now that they kind of know what we're looking for. They have also, because we're on the slide, Resurrection Church has expressed interest in sell, in the village annexing the property that they own right at the northwest corner where the rectory is. They're looking at annexing that, and if they do that, they would want it rezoned to commercial uses as well, which they think would make it more marketable and would help the site to the north with access. The Derwood Forest Outlot was originally intended to be a church site in like 1992. It's been owned by the Archdiocese. There was the concept plan in 2023 for senior apartments. Didn't seem like there was a favorable recommendation due to the density and the existing uses around there. So, that's another site. There has not been too much interest on it, other than multifamily. The northeast corner of Fairfax and Army Trail, a BP was approved a long time ago for a gas station and car wash at this location. It was never constructed. The property was recently bought by a developer who's in planning to construct a daycare facility and possibly a drive-thru-only coffee shop. There, this site, the private drive to the east is owned by Hanover Park, and there's actually a very narrow strip of land that the developer would have to reach an agreement with Hanover Park if they want to have access to that private drive. BP had to go through that process. We will go through the potential downtown redevelopment opportunities in August, so I'm going to bypass every, all those little sites. The proposed Lake Street TIF will be discussed this fall. And now, I'm quickly, hopefully, going, go through the unincorporated areas. These are places that the village has, our future land use plan is, serves as our guide so that we know how we want properties to develop. Every time something doesn't match our future land use plan, we bring it to the committee, we recommend they submit a concept plan to get the feedback from the board. So, we just kind of wanted to go through some of these locations to see if it's something that we need to start looking at updating this, because we haven't done a comprehensive update in almost 20 years. West Bartlett Road in Naperville. So, part of this property is within the city of Elgin. They do not have any utilities to this site. Again, in the early 2000s, Elgin had a concept plan from a developer to put in mixed-use retail, townhomes. It never came to fruition. We had adopt, we had amended our plan to incorporate their plans. Due to the trends in development, it doesn't seem like that's very likely to happen. We do have interest from the property owner wanting to disconnect from Elgin and possibly come into the village. So, I think that would be more likely to go mixed-use business park like Brewster Creek. On the north side of West Bartlett Road, we have it designated for mixed-use business park. If you recall, on site number four, directly at the corner, the Committee of the Whole reviewed a plan for a logistics company that ended up moving into Brewster Creek Business Park on Jack Court. There wasn't a lot of interest at that time of having that be mixed-use business park. So, is that an area that the board thinks that we need to study, what the appropriate uses would be on the north side?
Did we review that? That was a really big building. Is that the one where they wanted that huge building, and the residents north of there said?
Correct.
Yeah.
It never, so when we have concept plan, you're not getting any feedback from residents. It's not a public hearing. It's a public meeting, so you would get all that if they came through with a development application.
I just remember people not wanting it.
I remember that. It was a good building.
We're on all four sides of these three and four, right?
It, it was, if you look at the aerial, this, it was almost this entire lot.
Yeah.
Going to be a building. It was a little bit over 400,000 square.
I mean, these are unincorporated, and we have all four sides of it.
Uh, not on that, on that side, we don't, not fully.
Not on the north side?
Um, not on the west side. Part of the west side's unincorporated.
You only, you only need three, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Naperville Road, so there is an outlot that's unincorporated right at the railroad tracks and Spalding Road. And then, there is also two parcels under one ownership that we've seen a concept plan before for apartments. We've had interest for townhomes. There's some issues with connecting the utilities to Eagles Ridge subdivision for the stormwater And then, this is Route 59 and Lake Street. We kind of talked about this earlier. There's some random areas that are unincorporated. Number three is pretty much completely owned by IDOT as part of the Lake Street interchange, so that likely will not develop. There are several unincorporated parcels on Old Lake Street. You have the storage facilities on the west side, and there are some unincorporated properties on the east side. The village was thinking commercial on the west and still residential on the east.
So, why are we objecting to the storage lot?
We're objecting because we consider self-storage to be more of an industrial use than commercial. Cook County's ordinance actually reads the same way. And that location is directly across from Bay Tree, which IDOT has said is really the only opportunity that we would have to have an additional stoplight. So, if that property were to develop, we would have wanted access to the properties to the north so that we could get a signalized intersection there, should additional development happen on the west side. Sayore Road between West Bartlett and Sterns. We've had several plans over the years for developers to come in and build subdivisions. This was supposed to be, on the east side of Route 59, was supposed to be Bartlett Station Phase 3. They couldn't get agreement from the four different property owners at the time. I think they had three under contract, but one was a flag lot that prevented it from occurring. The Horse Farm is on the west side. We've had a concept plan that was submitted, but it never even went to the Committee of the Whole. The properties just north of Tokyo Um, the properties just north of Tokyo Steakhouse, uh, there's a covenant on those properties that they have to be developed residentially. If you recall, Bucky's had an application years ago. At that time, Bucky's had reached an agreement with all of the property owners to rescind that covenant. But because they never moved forward with the project, that covenant is still in place. So, that is an obstacle for development at that location. Um, the west side of South Bartlett Road, north of the railroad tracks, south of Struckman. So, this property, um, staff has received a lot of phone calls about now that it's been advertised, mainly for townhomes or apartments. We had one concept plan come through, um, the staff level. Staff provided some comments and we told them to resubmit to the board and they, they just chose to withdraw the application. So, it's, our comprehensive plan calls for it being estate residential. I don't necessarily think you'd get estate residences that close to the railroad tracks. So, um, and then Route 59, kind of between the railroad tracks and Army Trail Road. There, the northeast corner of Schick and 59 is currently for sale. We have talked to this property owner for 20-some years. We keep telling him to submit a concept plan. I've seen rough sketches for anything from commercial to a hotel to a mixture of estate residences and commercial, but nothing's ever been formally submitted for review. There are utilities that run through that site that were done as part of the Far Hills Development to the south.
But it's unincorporated?
It's unincorporated right now. So, it would be something that would have to, the village has a lot of, um, control because they would have to come in and request annexation and rezoning for whatever uses they're proposing there. Our comprehensive plan also calls for estate residential and mixed-use business park along Army Trail Road. When Eastfield subdivision was approved, they had their land use, um, attorney who presented, um, the reason, their reasonings for saying that, uh, business parks weren't going to develop on Army Trail, that it made more sense to do suburban residential, smaller lots. Based on that information, we changed the future land use plan for Eastfield. So, you can see that's the brighter yellow right at Petersdorf and Army Trail. Is that something that we need to look at doing additionally to the west? And then Site Five, the boundary line agreement has expired with the Village of Wayne. I know our Economic Development Coordinator was contacted by a developer at one point interested in redeveloping the horse stables at the corner. Is that some, we, right now, we didn't plan for that in our future land use plan because we had the boundary line agreement. So, that's something that we could consider amending as well.
That's an attractive corner.
Yes.
And it's really not highest and best use right now.
I think that corner being annexed in and developed would actually spark the other side by Resurrection Church. And I think you'd see a little bit more development going.
I'd like to see that whole strip.
Yeah, the whole thing.
Can you go to Castle Creek Outlet?
What?
Go back to the Castle Creek Outlet. Is that a property that maybe Lorna or Greco would be interested in? In light of, they're always expanding. They employ a lot of people in Bartlett. To keep them in Bartlett, is that, or is that too small?
I think we have enough land and I think their plans for expansion in the village, I think we're going to be able to accommodate them with what we have in the business park.
I look at that land and think that it would make a great sports complex.
Yeah. All right, that was very comprehensive. Thank you, Kristy. That was very informative. I know that we've talked about a few things on some of those already, but let's see what happens.
Do you want to?
When are we answering?
Do you want us to email you what our thoughts are?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be great. And then we
I repeat your interest today about, you know, hey, this, I can see this happening here and there, especially on the unincorporated portions.
Right, our strategic plan is to start looking at updating the, the future land use plan. So, this is a great starting point to get your input so we can kind of figure out what those sub areas are that we need to study.
And I would just highlight how valuable it is to have such an expert, um, being around for so long that knows what's going on in all of these. So, thank you.
Caesar's Palace.
Chairman, are you done?
Yes, that's all I have to
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. And I know that we have a couple more items, but I would like to skip down to Community Economic Development so we can get our, our veterans up here and so they can talk to us a little bit. So, we're going to flip-flop the next two agenda items. Community Economic Development Chairman Gansey.
Thank you, Mrs. President. We have one item, Bartlett Veterans Memorial Static Displays. The Bartlett American Legion Post 1212 and the Bartlett Veterans Memorial Foundation are seeking the village's permission to sponsor a project for the placement of static military equipment at the Bartlett Veterans Memorial Park located at 501 West Sterns Road. The organizations would be requesting the donation of a decommissioned M60 tank and a ship's anchor from the appropriate military organizations. The village owns the property and originally entered into a license agreement with the Bartlett Veterans Memorial Foundation related to the master site plan. Construction and maintenance of the memorial in 2010, the agreement has been amended and extended twice. The current agreement expires on June 30th, 2032. If the village supports the request for revised site plan identifying the location of the static displays could be approved administratively and the village board would need to amend the license agreement to incorporate the static displays. I'll turn that over to Kristy Stone.
So, um, so we received the request. Um, we just wanted to get the board's feedback before we gave them any guidance. But what they'd be looking at doing would be getting a decommissioned tank and kind of putting it in the median of the turnaround and also an anchor and having it kind of at the end of the part, row of parking. So, if you recall, originally, um, the master plan called for a very elaborate domed structure. They've scaled back their plans over the years just due to the cost, but thought that this would be a great way to also bring attention to this location.
I agree. I think it's great.
Absolutely. Awesome.
Yes.
What year is the tank from?
Do you guys know what year the tank is? Like, how old it is? Hey, I, I think it's fantastic. Whatever you guys want to do, it's fantastic. Um, is there, yeah, we probably should know if there's going to be needed fundraisers or whatever for that.
Correct.
Yep.
Get attention.
Any plans, any plans for any other static items? Helicopter?
My brother flew his training pilots.
That sounds good.
Fantastic.
I think, I think this would be an excellent addition, addition to the memorial that you have there. And I remember the picture that we had up there before, how we tried to raise funds for that and what we have now is sufficient. Very, very beautiful. Uh, just curious, typically, what would the tank, give me a ballpark price on the tank and the anchor? I'm just curious.
The, the equipment itself is not, is anything. We have the, uh, requested for the associated service. And the only cost would be transportation and the installation.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Well, thank, thank you. Appreciate, and, and gentlemen, thank you for your service. My father's a brick out there. We were able to, he served in World War II.
Well, I'll pledge, I'll pledge $500 personally. So, let me know where to write the check. I'm going to pledge $500 towards
Thank you.
I think you got a full board approval to do what you guys want to do. So, um, yeah, whatever we can do to help you guys, let us know.
Thank you for your service.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
Fantastic. We'll look forward to doing whatever we need to do to help you guys out.
Thank you.
Is that it? Thank you, Chairman Gunstein, or Chairman Gansey. I guess we skipped that. And now we're going to go back to items, Item B, which is License and Ordinance Committee Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have one item on our, on our agenda tonight, and that's the elected official's salary. When discussing the changes for the clerk slash deputy clerk office positions, a request was made for a review of office compensation. The faci- um, facilities that discuss include the memos. Our most recent survey from the COGS about elected officials' pay. Our municipal code stipulates the village president's salary is $6,000. The liquor control commissioner is $1,000. Trustees are $4,000 and the village clerk is $4,500. Clerk's positions ranges from the survey I take it is $2,600 to $91,604. The average salary for the clerk is $14,500. The trustees range from $960 to $16,000. The average is $4,400. These figures represent the salary ranges and average salaries for different positions within a village or municipality. The salary range is shown as the minimum and maximum amounts typically earned by individuals in each role, while the average salary provides a central value that reflects typical compensation for that position. Per state statute, the change of the compensation, the change must not be within the elected official's current term and at least 180 days prior to the date when the elected officials would start office. So, the recommendation timeline for establishing elected officials' compensation is no later than the October meeting ahead of the April elections and swearing in of elected officials in May. So, to be clear, we can't give ourselves raises, correct?
Correct. And, um, one, um, fact that's not in the memo included was the last time that, um, those salary ranges were changed was 2003.
Very good. Is there anything else staff would like to add? Any questions or comments from the committee?
I had a question. Uh, was 2003, that was the last time the village board got, uh, received an increase? Okay, 2003.
I
I thought it was earlier than that.
I think this conversation started with the clerk
Yeah.
position and the secretary retiring at that time. And I started to think about all the stuff that the clerk takes care of. And I'm, what, salary's $4,000 as well?
$4,500.
$4,500. And I just thought that that was, you know, it's more than a, uh, part-time job.
I mean, I can contest to that because I was bugging Lorna for the last four days.
My thought was Lorna has to take, well, she's retired now. But if you're, anybody is clerk, they have to take time off of their normal day's job to do what she does currently. That's how this came about. And is it time to give clerk a raise? That's
Well, I think while we're doing that, I agree wholeheartedly. I think that we should also reevaluate the, uh, the village, our president's salary and, uh, and the entire board. I think we should reevaluate everything. It's been 21 years since anyone's had an increase.
I'm fine the way it is, but if whatever you guys wanted to feel like doing, I really
Well, you're not going to vote on it. We will.
I know, but I've never been in this for the fast amount of money.
I don't think any of us have.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't think anybody here is.
The average trustee's salary is 4,452 and we're currently at four. I don't know that I see the point in
I think we're fine.
About that. I mean, we can certainly talk about the clerk's position.
I think it was a general discussion that started with the clerk's position.
This is for review, right?
We tend to reinvest it back into the community every Tuesday after the meeting anyway. So, I'm good.
How did, how did you average the clerk's average? Don't tell me you used the $91,000 where it's a full-time clerk position. That's not part of the average, I hope.
There was actually two dollar amounts in the clerk's salary that were taken out that
Because they're full-time employees? Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so there are two dollar amounts. So, in general, without the full-time salaries in there, it's around $14,000 for a clerk.
Did we have a, an actual list, a job description of what the responsibilities of the clerk is?
Well, Lorna?
Yeah, we do. We have one now.
Would you like to share it?
Share.
No, no, she didn't want to share it.
It means for right now, you want me to tell you?
If you can think of it, yeah. This is, I
Well, right now.
You attend the meetings?
Attend the meetings. Um, I have to come in the day before and put together, you know, print out all the ordinances and get them all ready to be signed. Um, I have to go in the day after the meeting, put them all into Laserfish and distribute them.
Get them over to whatever
The whole election process is huge.
Yeah.
Do things have to be filed with different, with counties and?
Well, anything that needs to be filed, yeah, that would happen.
So, ordinances and
Come back in. But usually it's distributed to the department.
All the election stuff.
I have a whole, yeah, I, I've been keeping a list because now it's, it's everything separated and so it needs to be
Transcribe the minutes?
I do not trans, only the executive session minutes.
But you put, you put the minutes down in, in writing?
Correct, but only the executive session minutes. This executive secretary is doing the minutes.
Okay, so the minutes from this meeting, you do not do?
No.
Administration office will transcribe the meeting minutes for the board meeting and the committee meeting. But, um, the village clerk transcribes the minutes for the executive sessions.
Okay.
Is that on tape? Is that how she gets that information? It's on
How many hours per month would you estimate?
During election time, probably.
Uh, yeah, there's election
Over the course of a year, then?
I bet it quite often actually lately, but
How many hours a month does she work?
Now that you're not an executive secretary, you're just the clerk, do you think $4,500 is fair compensation for what you do?
Absolutely not.
So, if you, I mean, and this is totally
She's making about $5 an hour right now.
Exactly. So, I mean, if you had to put a dollar amount in what you do, I mean, and granted, the, the hours we put in are not, it's, it's pales in comparison what we put in. Four grand for what we do. But like Kevin said, we do not do this for the money. But if you had to put a dollar amount in, would it be 10,000? Would it be 15?
I think we just take the average.
Yeah, I would say what was there sounded fair.
Well, yeah, we don't want to like, you know, put you on the spot or anything, but we already did.
Lorna, what are you worth?
Well, I'll tell you this.
I tell you what, she has to chase me down for a lot of stuff, too.
Adam, let me address something, you know, you were talking about. That's a real good point you brought up because let's take a look at the trustees. We're, uh, the average is 4,400 and we're $4,000. And we look at the average, Lorna's salary at $4,500 and, uh, the clerk is at $14,005. So, you've raised a very
She's not even close. The clerk's not even close.
She's working 25 hours a month at $15.
Yeah, that's
An hour. That's what it is now.
Yeah, it's pretty bad.
I'd like to also
When I saw the 14, I, I thought if I reran, I would, I would rerun again for the 14, but I wouldn't do it for the $4,500.
Yeah.
So, can we establish a, a salary where it has an automatic percentage? Or is this
A cost of living increase?
If Chomber does.
So, you can include a, it just has to be set before the term. As long as it's clear, you can't change it once that's
I'm not doing this for the money, just like the rest of the trustees. So, if we are going to send this to the board and we decide on it, I would like to vote separate trustee, village president and clerk.
I think we should address
Name down in lion's
Dan, you raised a good point.
I think we should address the clerk's position. I mean, that's, that's
Well, I want to do it separate. I don't think it's, it should be
We had a percentage increase on an annual basis based on
So, I think, I, I mean, we got the averages here. If we think we just want to use the average, just use the averages and put a percentage every year. FICA or whatever the COLA is.
Percentage every year.
For all of it.
Right.
Just put a COLA on it. That way nobody has to, because in 2050, when we're all gone, they're still going to be at 4,000, which might they're still going to be at 4,000, which might not even be currency anymore.
You're not going to be here in 2050. Kevin, you're not going to be here in 2050.
No, 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 no.
Well, I'm not going to be.
You guys decide what you think you want to do, but I think it's a good idea just to get something put together for the clerk, for sure.
I like the idea of the averages and then use a, for all, everybody across the board, then just use a nominal increase based on something that's, you know, the cost of living or whatever the case may be. That made most sense to me.
I don't think anyone's going to bark at us for a $400 raise when we're making four grand.
No.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think the cost of living should be every year, though. Again, we're public servants, we're not here for.
Right, maybe, maybe by term?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something like that, every four years?
Otherwise, it's too hard to track.
Maybe every four years, every three, whatever, we figure it out.
Board can always reassess this every time, you know, for, it's only going to apply to those newly coming into office, so you could reassess this again in two years when there's going to be another election, there's going to be new officials coming.
Is this something we send back to staff and we all put our thoughts in and then bring it back here, or are we?
That'd be a good idea. I can just give Paul an idea of what.
We have enough time, right?
Yeah.
By October?
You have until October.
Yeah. Ruby?
First meeting or second meeting? First meeting or second meeting in October?
I don't know the election date off the top of my head.
I think, either meeting in October will be good. I think November's a hard and fast cutoff.
Is that it? Okay.
Yeah.
Any other comments or concerns from the committee? It's all we have under licenses and ordinance.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sir, move.
Seconded by trustee Dany, seconded by trustee Hopkins with a quick please call to roll.
Trustee Dany?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Report?
Yes.
Swansky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.